This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board for Tuesday, February 27, 2024, to order roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul. Trustee Paul? He's here. Trustee Zerbal is excused. Trustee Atkinson?
Here.
Trustee Krieger?
Here.
And Trustee Flukie?
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, action on the minutes from the opening and close session of January 23, 2024.
Move to approve?
I have one, oh, second, and then I have one correction.
Okay.
Under eight E.
Okay.
Just a second. I'm sorry, 10E.
What is it?
10E. So it's the the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee Homegrown Way. There's just, the second and third sentence are the same in there.
I'm sorry, the what?
Second and third sentences in the detail are the same, starting, staff recommended items to be reviewed, and then staff recommend items be to reviewed. It's like the same sentence twice.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you get it? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second and to, with that correction. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Anybody like to speak on any items not on the agenda? One more time, is there anybody that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Number seven, written communications and/or announcements. 7A, proclamation recognizing Green Bay Packaging as Ashwabnon's 2023 Community Excellence Award recipient. So every year, we have a, a community excellence award for a business in the village of Ashwabnon, and this year, we selected Green Bay Packaging to get that award, and I'm going to read it to Michelle Hansen, who is here to receive it. Okay, proclamation honoring Green Bay Packaging Community Excellence Award 2023. Whereas the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Ashwabnon wishes to annually honor an organization or person who makes extraordinary efforts to improve our community. And whereas Green Bay Packaging started manufacturing corrugated boxes with one box plant in Green Bay, Wisconsin. Today, Green Bay Packaging has over 135 locations nationwide. And whereas Green Bay Packaging's coated product headquarters is located at 3250 South Ridge Road in the village of Ashwabnon. And whereas Green Bay Packaging is a family-owned, American-made manufacturer leading the way in award-winning, sustainable, innovative manufacturing. And whereas Green Bay Packaging has more than 4,500 employees and was named one of America's best mid-sized employers in 2023. And whereas Green Bay Packaging is a great steward of our community through the philanthropic efforts of the Green Bay Packaging George Crest Foundation. Now, therefore, be it resolved with the deepest of appreciation of these efforts in community outreach, the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Ashwabnon does hereby recognize and award Green Bay Packaging the 2023 Community Excellence Award. Thank you so much. Green Bay Packaging is just really an excellent community partner in this area, and that's why we wanted to give, give you this award. Okay. Okay, and Michelle will say something.
Thank you so much for this recognition. I will, as an employee of Green Bay Packaging, just reiterate that it truly is a wonderful place to work. Employees at Green Bay Packaging are valued, were supported, and as president of the George Crest Foundation, I know how generous the company is to the community, and this means a lot. So thank you so much for recognizing our efforts and all that we do for the community and beyond.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle. Okay. 8A, action on consent agenda. A, consider, discuss, act on change of agent loft two Green Bay TRS LLC DBA Delta Hotels by Marriott Jonathan Hicks. B, consider, discuss, act on change of agent Beechwood Stadium View Hotel LLC DBA Hampton Inn Green Bay Stadium Andrea Schultz. C, consider, discuss, act on change of agent Beechwood Green Bay Hotel LLC DBA Home Two Suites by Hilton Green Bay Andrea Schultz. Consider, discuss, act on change of agent GB Hotel LLC DBA Residence Inn by Marriott Diane Hoovermans. E, consider, discuss, act on change of agent Aldi Inc., Wisconsin DBA Aldi number 54 Cody Maggie. F, consider, discuss, act on an annual renewal of a conditional use home occupation permit at 2090 Marley. G, consider, discuss, act on an annual renewal of a conditional use home occupation permit at 1394 Bruce Lane. H, consider, discuss, act on position description of IT network specialist. I, receive, accept the investment report. J, budgeted expenditures. K, consider, discuss, act on citizen member appointment to the Finance and Personnel Committee. L, Public Works Department monthly report. And M, Park Rec and Forestry Department reports. Does anybody want anything taken out to discuss, or I would need a motion to approve?
Hey, Mary, can we, on item K, Mr. Jayden, I'm sure he's a fine candidate, just like to hear some more about him.
Okay, so Tim Jayden is a lifelong Ashwabnite. He went to high school here. He is married to a lifelong Ashwabnite. They have four children who've all gone through our school. He is an engineer at Georgia Pacific. I've known him for a long, long time. He did check with his company to see if there would be any conflicts with him sitting here, because they do have some properties in the village, and there are not. I think Terry did send it out. His application.
I did say it, Terry.
You didn't?
I didn't.
It came later.
I did. I did.
Okay, yeah, she sent it late, earlier today.
Okay, I just missed it then, so sorry about that.
It wasn't with the packet, but she did send it.
All right, just wanted to hear a little bit more about him, that's all, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine, public hearing. Public hearing on resolution number R 2-1-24, a two-phase implementation of sanitary sewer rate increase. Brian Rickert.
So as you'll see, we do have a public hearing for a rate increase, a two-phase rate increase for sanitary sewer district, or sanitary sewer utility. Phase one will be implemented in April 1st. It's a 6.5% increase. Phase two being in October 1st, being a 3.5% increase. This is due to the fact that we're seeing increased costs, mainly costs that are coming from new water. So that's Green Bay Met Sewage Treatment Facility. They're, they're changing their way in how they fund their capital projects, where they're actually expecting to get payment for the projects upfront. If the projects do come in lower than what they're expecting, there'll actually be a credit back to the municipality. However, between that and then just normal inflation, our costs of operating our sanitary sewer utility have increased to the point where expenditures are greater than the revenues that are being brought in.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this item? Anybody who would like to speak for or against this item? Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against this item? I need a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. The hearing is closed. Okay. 10, action items. 10A, consider, discuss, act on resolution number R 2-1-24, a two-phase implementation of sanitary sewer rate increase. Okay. Anybody have any comments? I know, Jay, that at Public Works, you had brought up the fact that, that the costs are going up, and, and I, I would fully agree. You know, unfortunately, you know, we can't absorb in the sewer utility, we can't absorb any of those costs. So that's why when they increase some.
Yeah, I guess. I understand where we're at. I get, I get the issue. It's just there's been, you know, we've had a multiplier of increases in that area over the last couple of years, and I know it is hitting some of our residents kind of hard. I know some of them that have reached out to me and have expressed that. So I'm wanting to make sure that somehow we get that message back to NEW, that I get, all right, they're going to change the way that they're funding their projects, so they want more money upfront, so they can fund the projects and that. Okay, I understand that. But, you know, we've had multiple increases over the last couple of years here, and it's, it's, it's hitting people's pocketbooks pretty heavy. And I just want that message to get back to NEW. That, that's, that would be my, my wish.
I, I agree with that, Jay.
Jay, I have to agree with you. I've been on the board long enough that any coming in and want this, want that, I really wonder about their way of financing things. It's a pretty hefty one to absorb, like you said. I guess the question I have, couldn't we break that down rather than half one year, half the next, in thirds? So it isn't quite a bang on the people. It's a little more gentle as far as the annual cost.
I think, Gary, I think you could, you know, kind of skin the cat multiple different ways. I think this was the approach that we felt was going to do both that, with that in mind, that we were going to kind of break the cost down over, over two phases to avoid kind of that blunt blow, if you will, with the increases. Unfortunately, the utility has been basically taking, taking those costs and having to really kind of cover those costs from new water for the period of the last couple, three years. So we, we are bleeding cash right now out of the sanitary sewer utility as a result of that. So in order to try to bring balance to our books and ensure that we can get closer to the black on our utility expenses, this was what we recommended as the best approach.
How long have we been out of the black?
I'll pass it to Greg, and he can kind of answer that. But it's been a couple of years that we have been more or less in the red, if you will, where our expenditures are more than our revenues. And so this has been kind of an ongoing affair. I think part of the challenge, and one that we've recognized as staff, is that the village has been more reluctant to increase utility rates incrementally over time. And so we have not increased our utility rates other than these last couple, this proposal, and then the one completed last year. It had been a number of years since our, our last utility rate increase. On the water side, I believe it was about 16 years since the last time, 12 or 16 years, since the last time we increased utility rates. Our recommendation moving forward is that if you're going to make those increases, you should do them incrementally over time. So instead of having a 10, or 12, or 20, or 30% increase, you only have a few percentage points every, every year, every other year, to reflect those increasing costs.
That would be my wish as well, Joel, is something like that, just to make it easier on residents. Say, our community, we got so many fixed incomes that, you know, it, it hurts, so.
And we will certainly, and we appreciate your comments in regards to new water and their cost increases. This is a conversation, quite frankly, that happens with, with just about every municipality. They express those same concerns, and we'll convey those remarks to new water. As part of the budget process, they do have a public hearing in which we do participate, and we do provide feedback in their budget process. And they, quite honestly, they hear the same, same issue year over year, every time they have these large capital increase, increases in costs. So we will, we will continue to convey that message.
Appreciate that.
Okay, did, go ahead there. Did we, how long, did we answer Gary's question about how long it's been?
2022.
The, the sanitary sewer utility has been running, running a deficit for approximately six years, Gary.
All right, thank you.
My question on new water is, when did they let us know this? Was this just like a last minute thing? Obviously, they have to budget, but, you know, we did the whole budget for this year, and then all of a sudden, this comes up like at the last minute, or did we know this was coming? Or how did this all come to be?
No, in fact, we, we knew about this. So this rate increase that's proposed here was a rate increase that was included in the budget. So we knew about it. This is the actual implementation aspect of the process. So this 5% increase was incorporated in the operating budget for 2024. This is a procedural step to increase our rates to reflect the revenue that we had projected as part of our budget. So it was not a surprise. Typically, they get their budget approved late summer, early fall. And so it's usually right, maybe a month or so prior to the adoption of our budget, so that we have sound numbers to work from when we're finalizing our budget process.
Okay.
And I also would like to just reiterate too, that this increase is not on your total water bill, just so that the residents know, it's not on your total water bill. It is on the sewer portion of the water bill, so.
Yep.
So, okay.
I have another question, and may just be my mathematic ability. So phase one is 6.5%, and if you just look down at the volume charges for the very first one, it's $5.92 increase. Then we have phase two, which is a 3.5%, and it's a $6.13 increase. So I don't get it. It's a bigger increase, 6.5, and then we're going to 3.5, but the amount is higher? Is that because it's increasing, and then, so why is that higher than the 6.5 increase?
No, so I could, I can definitely walk through that. So, so the, what might be a little bit easier. So if you take the 5.92, and you subtract the, the 5.56, that, that's our current rate. So it's a, a jump, let's see here, of, let's see, 36 cents. And then the next increase is from 5.92 to 6.13. So it, it's the delta, or the difference in between them, so that's 21 cents. So it's a, a jump of 36 cents, and then a jump of 21 cents.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes more sense. When I looked at it, I'm like, I just couldn't get why that was bigger and that was less. Okay.
Correct. So it's, it's, just kind of follow it from, we'll say, left to right across that row. And you'll see what we, what people pay now, what they're going to pay April 1st, and then what they will then pay on October 1st.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number R 2-1-24, a two-phase implementation of sanitary sewer rate increase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R 2-1-24. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10B, consider, discuss, act on appeal of denied operator's license, Ashley Carl. Patrick, I'm going to let you take this.
Sure, thank you. Ms. Carl applied for an operator's license for the, from the village board, and per our policy that Ms. Carl was denied, she had a felony conviction that substantially, substantially related to the licensing activity. So administration-wise, it's staff, they don't have any, discuss, staff doesn't have any discretion to approve or deny what is following the, the policy. The discretion comes from the committee and the, and the board itself. I, I, reviewing Ms. Carl's background, I think she's a good candidate to approve the, or uphold the committee's recommendation of approving her operator's license. I think there's enough mitigating circumstances in her background, the length of time it's been since the conviction. Although it does substantially relate, it's been about 14 years since the conviction, release of discharge of probation, expungement on the record, and successful employment and education. I think that this is a good candidate to give the operator license to Ms. Carl. I see her sitting in the audience today, so if there's any questions, I'm sure she'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments, motion, whatever?
We had, we had discussed this at Public Works extensively, and looked at her background. And as Patrick said, a judge had even looked at it, and it expunged the felonies, which obviously doesn't take it completely off the record, but it isn't to the public view. But as Patrick mentioned, you know, she's done a lot of great things, and has really turned her life around. And at Public Works, we, we voted that we felt that her license should be approved. So I would make the motion that we approve her license.
Second.
I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to grant the operator's license to Ashley C. Carl. Any other comments? Here. I'm sorry, sure. Ashley, if you'd like to come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello. My name is Ashley C. Carl. I live at 1659 Christiana Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54303. So my only question is, is there is a letter that was sent to my employer about all of this, that I was promised there would be a new one revised and sent to them? Am I still going to be getting that letter?
I could speak on that.
Okay.
We, we had to wait for the appeal process to go through fully before the board. So the committee approved it, and the board, well, it's pending for the board right now. So once that happens, that you will get a letter saying that it has been approved, pending this.
I just wanted to make sure, just because they were looking in the, and they kept telling me they weren't seeing it, so I just wanted to check.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
It'll, it'll go out.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, 10C, consider, discuss, act on special event application for Selcom Green Bay Marathon. So this is Chris, and we also have Deputy Chief Kozloski if we need him. Okay.
Do you want me to go ahead? Nick, or you want me to? I see Ryan's on the line, so.
Yeah, Ryan is joining virtually. So just to kind of give you a little background, there's really no change from the previous year, as far as the route, time, anything like that. It's pretty much a rinse and repeat of last year. I've already secured the mutual aid that we have required to put this event on, that we've done the last two years through Hobart Lawrence Police Department, Oneida Police Department. And the Brown County Sheriff is going to help us out at the start line a little bit with something. So I have no concerns. Green Bay Fire is going to be handling the EMS aspects of things, just like they have in years past. So no concerns from Public Safety's end as far as approving this permit.
I, I do like the fact that they do notify all the people, because that does, that does tie up our neighborhood over there for quite a while, so. I know that they have to send out a flyer to the residents over there.
Correct.
Yeah.
When there is a brake and the runners, are they going to let traffic through?
Yes, we've done that in years past, and that will not be a change. We will continue as brakes and runners permit. We'll have the officers push through as many cars as they can safely.
Every time you people do a marathon, it comes through Ashwabnon, and it tries, ties up the community that I represent.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special event application for Selcom Green Bay Marathon. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10D, consider, discuss, act on a Class A liquor license request for Oneida Nation DBA Oneida One Stop 3120 Packerland Drive. Joel?
Okay, thank you, Madam President. The Oneida Nation, doing business as the Oneida One Stop, is seeking a Class A intoxicating liquor license for their store located at 3120 Packerland Drive. This would be a convenience store. A Class A beer license has been issued to that premise currently. So again, they are looking to expand that license to an intoxicating liquor retail license for away consumption. The paperwork has been submitted, and the corresponding fees have been paid. Public Safety has conducted their background check, and has indicated approval from their, their point of view. This item did make its way to the Public Works and Protection Committee earlier in the month, where the committee did deny the Class A intoxicating liquor license for the basis that the village of Ashwabnon has a history, if you will, of not granting Class A intoxicating licenses to convenience stores in the village of Ashwabnon. So again, committee recommended denial for that basis. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. I believe there are individuals online that are available from Oneida Nation if you have any questions specific to them.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments?
I'll make a motion to deny the liquor license.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the Class A liquor license for Oneida One Stop 3120 Packerland Drive. Any other comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 10E, consider, discuss, act on the bid award for the Glory Water Tower refurbishment. Brian Rickert.
All right. So back in early January, we had posted a advertisement to refurbish the interior of the Glory Road Water Tower. We then opened bids on that project on February 1st. There were nine bids that were received for that project, so a very competitive bidding environment. The bids varied from 198,000 to 750,000, or 198,000 all the way up to 649,000. Normal practice has been for the village to award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. It should be noted that the lowest responsible bidder did rescind their bid due to the fact that they incorporated some of their mobilization costs in a different project, not within the village of Ashwabnon, in a different municipality, but were not awarded that contract. So our recommendation is actually to award the contract to the second most responsible bidder, and that's O N A Classic Coatings in the amount of 269,000.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
Have we done business with them before?
We have not, but we reached out to the engineer who is assisting us with this project. They've done two other water tanks in the Fox Valley, one being in Grand Shoot, and one being in Fox Crossing. And they have successfully completed work within the Fox Valley area.
Are we going to do any lettering on it?
Ah, so this is only for the interior of the tank, so. Ah, so this is only for the interior of the tank, so there won't be.
Oh, interior, okay.
Yep, just the interior. So the exterior of the tank, there will be some surface repairs on the exterior of the tank. If, if you did notice, there is some rust staining from some blemishes on the exterior of the tank that will be repaired as part of the interior work of this, of this water tower. The tower itself, exterior still has about another twelve, ten to twelve-year lifespan, based on the, the paint condition.
Brian, I was surprised to see the bids from so many different states. Is that typical? Is just such a unique process? There's not a lot of businesses that do it, I would assume?
Yeah, that's very, very typical for, for water tower work. They generally come in, sometimes work seven days, seven, six to seven days a week. And it's very common that they're, they're not local.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve ON, ONA Classic Coating for a total of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to award the bid to ONA Classic Coating in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any other comments? All, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten F, Consider Discuss Act on the bid award for the Lombardi Access Road improvements and Brookwood Drive Sidewalk Project. Steve Burr.
All right. This is a project that we've discussed a few times at Village Board, started back in budget season. We had a, a public informational meeting back in January, had met with the property owners along that were adjacent to the, the project. So includes, you know, the reconstruction of the access road, adding Kermit Gutter in both sides of the access road, adding sidewalk on the south side of the access road, adding sidewalk along the north side of Brookwood Drive between Argon and Marley, and then some sidewalk on Marley, north of Brookwood, south of Lombardi. This project was advertised, and we opened bids on February fifteenth. We did receive three bids from pre-qualified contractors. Bids ranged from nine hundred and sixty-four thousand to just over a million dollars. Vinton Construction came in at the, the lowest pre-qualified responsible bid in the, in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and five cents. We've done work with Vinton in the past, and don't have any qualms working with them again. Just wanted to note also, you know, there's been questions, you know, are we burying the power lines? That is not part of this bid award, but is part of our overall budget that, of one point five million. So we have quotes from UPS and other utilities to get that work complete at the same time.
Okay.
The first time we voted on this, it was just for utilities, wasn't it?
Say that again, Gary.
The first time we voted on this, that was just for utilities, not the road construction?
Yeah, there was discussion, I think, yeah, burying the power lines. Yep. That was a separate, separate discussion. And this is.
That was a separate one, okay.
That was for burying the power line. This is for the utility and road reconstruction.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Jay.
Yes. Steve, on the bids for the power line and that, have you, when are they going to be coming in? So that we can kind of see, is the overall budget, is it, is it looking like it's gonna be good? Or are we gonna be over budget with the power lines being buried and this part of it? How's it looking?
Yeah, it's, it's looking good. We, we talked with WPS, you know, they already gave us a, they submitted a contract. You know, it's like three hundred, just over three hundred thousand dollars to do that. So that comes within.
All right, then it'd be fine.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the bid to Vinton Construction for nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and five cents. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten G, Consider Discuss Act on Revisiting the Twenty Twenty Four Ash Tree Removal Contract Award. Rex.
Okay. At the January Village Board meeting, it was approved through the bidding process to go with Peters Logging and Tree Service. They are out of Koshina. Immediately following that bid award that week, our forester, Tim Bauchnet, called Peters and asked for their workers' compensation information. They were unable to provide it. They said they did not have it at that time. Tim gave a, a deadline to get that in. They did not get that in by the first deadline. Tim gave them a second deadline, and they still did not get that workers' compensation in. So at that point, our recommendation, because of that, and they, we still don't have anything, is to, two parts here, is to rescind the bid, which was awarded at the January Village Board meeting, to Peters Logging and Tree Service, and then approve the next lowest responsible bidder, which would be Trios. We've worked with Trios for a number of years, a number of the other management areas. Two and three years ago, I believe, we're done by Trios. They've also done a number of our park subcontract to take the ash tree down there. So we're comfortable with that second lowest bidder, and that's what our recommendation is. Two parts.
We need a, I was gonna say, we need a two-part motion first to rescind the original bid we accepted, and then to create a new one.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to rescind the awarding to Peters Logging and Tree Service, and then to award that to Trios Tree Service.
Yep.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We, to rescind the bid to Peters Logging for fifty thousand, seven eighty-six, and to award the bid, bid to Trios Tree Service of fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten H, Village.
I do wanna make note that we got really positive feedback on Foley. I was kind of disappointed that they weren't gonna be able to get in there, but. Understand, it's just, boy, they, we got so much positive feedback. I love to see them come in and get some more, more work in the village.
Foley did a great job for us last year. They're, they're very, they were very efficient. I will say that Trios has a different method of generally taking the trees down, but they are very good to work with as well.
Yeah. Understood.
Okay. Ten H, Village Fund Balance Policy Amendment. Greg Lenhalz.
Yeah, so the village has, currently has a fund balance policy. And what that is used for is to ensure that the village has basically money in its savings account, if you will, for unforeseen circumstances. Really, the general purpose fund balance is to make sure we have sufficient funds for our daily financial needs, secure investment-grade bond ratings, because it's important to have certain amount of money available for emergencies when we go to issue bonds, and they look at their rating analysis. Also, in case we have some revenue shortfalls or unexpected expenditures that aren't budgeted for, that we have so many to draw off of. Our current policy that we have in place is specifically referencing an unassigned fund balance. So when we take our fund balance, which is amount of cash kind of in the bank, there are different categories that you put money into. We have things like unspendable funds or restricted funds for items that we would have either have a commitment to pay. Maybe we have some prepaid expenditures or receivables that are out there, loan receivable inventories, things like that. And then there's what's called committed, where the board would take action and say, we want to allocate X dollars for this specific purpose. We've done that in the past for employee retirement items, or maybe we have a project coming along the way that we want to ensure that we have money set aside for future expenditure. Then there's what's called unassigned, that's kind of everything else. It's kind of free cash to be used in, in, more or less in emergency purposes, or it could be used potentially if we had budget shortfalls. If you recall back in, during the economic downturn, or like the COVID years, where we lost a lot of room tax revenue, we had budgeted an actual deficit, and we had money in our fund balance to, to use for that purpose, a short one-time item. So currently, our fund balance target level we have, the way that it's stated is that we will have a, at the end of the fiscal year, a general fund will have not less than twenty percent of the subsequent year's budget. So for twenty twenty-three, for example, we need to ensure that we have twenty percent fund balance of the twenty twenty-four general fund expenditure level. There is no cap to this, so that, that dollar amount could just keep going up and up and up. And although that may sound great, it's not necessarily a really good, efficient use of funds. It also could, you know, if anyone looks at our budget and says, hey, why are you carrying fifty percent fund balance, and you're still increasing, you know, sewer rates or tax rates and things like that? So what we want to do is simply just add a cap to be thirty percent. So we'd have a range of twenty to thirty. We think that's a very comfortable level. It's above the National GFWA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. Their best practice recommendations are significantly higher than what they recommend. And there's just kind of a general expectation of, you know, anywhere two, three, four months of expenditure levels that you could cover, and that would be more than that as well. We've been currently hovering around thirty percent, thirty-two percent. This year, just artificially, our fund balance dropped because our expenditures went up considerably in the twenty twenty-four budget. But we still would end, we're looking to end twenty twenty-three at around twenty-seven percent. So we're still at the high end of our range, and this is something that we could manage. And if we have surplus at the end of the year, we've been doing this, anytime we have surplus, we look ahead to other areas. Employee retirements, potential projects coming down the line, and village building fund. We've looked at, you know, when we've had increased the cost of doing our annual mill pave and road construction, we've been able to assign certain dollars over, and that, none of that would end. We'd still would look at that to keep us in the range. So at the end of the year, if, during the audit, if it looks like we're gonna go above the thirty, we would just come to the board and say, hey, we'd like to reposition some of these dollars for these purposes. So the only other language change in here, there is a term, but not greater than thirty percent that was added. And then it, there's a sentence. Currently, it says, if the unassigned fund balance at fiscal year-end falls below the goal, we're saying if it falls below or above the goal, that the village shall provide explanation, develop a plan to achieve and maintain the minimum fund balance. I don't recall the village at any point ever dropping below its minimum. I don't foresee that happening in the future. We're usually fiscally responsible. One other thing to add, you may have recalled from the audit, they'll show you median averages of other communities. There are communities that are up around forty percent. I think when you look at what the village does, though, we have things like our equipment replacement fund for our vehicles. That has its own fund balance that we carry. And there are other capital project funds that will carry balances along the way. So if you consider all of those as well, then we would be maintaining a much higher fund balance. So we're not looking to take general fund dollars and use it to buy vehicles. We have a separate fund for that that maintains its own fund balance as well. So fiscally, I think this is a very responsible change to the policy, because I think it just, we don't get too high, that, from a budgeting perspective, that it keeps us in a range as well as we're looking forward for future projects.
Any questions for Greg about the change in the fund balance wording?
I'll move to approve the change in the fund balance policy.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, Jay.
Yeah, Greg, I'm just curious. I mean, that's still a ten percent range. And I, and I know you've really managed this very well, you know, and I know you've always tried to keep it in this range, even though now you're actually adding it to the policy. But I, I'm curious as to kind of what are your philosophies in that? I almost feel, because it's ten percent, you wanna be on the lower end, closer to twenty? Or you wanna be on the higher end, closer to thirty?
Quite honestly, I think if we could sit right around the twenty-five and hover in that space, and that way, it's a little bit protected. If we have something happen in a year that unforeseen, and it drops, and we need to dip into it, we're not gonna be dealing with going below twenty. And we're also not sitting at a level right at thirty percent where we have potential funds that we could be using for other purposes. So I think the goal will be twenty, you know, the twenty-five would be our target. And then from there, we can incorporate this better during the budgeting process as well, and we can relay this information to Bond Counsel or Moody's Rating Calls and things like that. That's the biggest concern I have, is Moody's, when we shift down especially, how they perceive that shift. We can tell them what we want, but if they feel like we are, you know, not managing our cash or our budget very well, that's the kind of things that lead to, you know, rating decreases. But I think twenty-five, we're right in the middle of the range. It gives us a little buffer to go up, a little buffer to go down, and time to get us back to that middle range, if you will.
Jay, trustee, trustee Zerbal also kind of asked a similar question at committee. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, but the question was, okay, what, why, why thirty percent? Why, why have that range? Is that too high? Is that too low? Kind of a similar question. And one of the, the comments that, that we had provided at committee too is that it, providing that range obviously gives some flexibility to the village board in determining how it's going to utilize its fund balance. But it also creates a level of responsibility to the taxpayer that we're gonna be good stewards with their money. If we had a hundred percent fund balance to our operating expenditures, it could be viewed by others that that's not being a very good steward with taxpayer dollars, that we're basically taxing them to put into savings, to sit on, and then not utilize those dollars for services or infrastructure that will benefit the community. So Greg hit it on the head, you know, ideally, you're around twenty-five percent. The, the range is there to allow you that flexibility then, that if we get close to the thirty, you say, well, there may be a project that we would like to support, so we're gonna shave a little bit out of our fund balance and get us down to that mid-range. Certainly, if we go above thirty percent, that's your cue then, that, okay, we're above our range. Now it's reasonable to take that fund balance and apply it to a project or a one-time purchase to bring that within that range. Greg also hit it on the head that creditors are going to look at that policy, and their rating is gonna be based on, okay, if you're at thirty-two percent, and you spend it down, and you're now at twenty-seven percent, they're gonna look at that as a reasonable, everyday kind of practice. If every year, you're over year, you're incrementally increasing, and you're getting closer to, let's say, forty or fifty percent, that could look negatively from the, from the credit rating bureau as well, that we're not adhering to that policy and being good stewards to the, to the taxpayers.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to change the language in the fund balance policy. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten I, Unaudited Twenty Twenty Three General Fund Financial Statement. Greg.
Thank you. So currently, the auditors are, are in the, well, they're not here right now, but they're here this week. So these are unaudited numbers, and they're not finalized yet, but they're gonna be pretty close. Right now, for the year of twenty twenty-three, you can see, we're looking in, in summary to have a net change in fund balance, and we just talked about fund balance, of four hundred thousand dollars. And let me explain why that's not zero. If you recall, during twenty twenty-three, we merged the employee retirement fund into the general fund. Reason I did that was because, from an audit perspective, they view those sons, those funds as, like funds, so they just merge them together. And then what we see in our budget book, to what we see in the financials, looks a little goofy sometimes, because they're, they merge them together. So what I did is took the fund balance that was in that retirement, retirement fund and created it as a reserve account within the general fund. And so this case, in years past, as I mentioned, we would have taken the four hundred thousand before the audit was final and transferred that out to the village employee retirement fund, and then we would have had a zero change to fund balance. Well, in this case, we're gonna take the four hundred, I'll propose in March, once the audit's done, to move that into the employee retirement reserve account, because we do have a number of retirements in twenty twenty-four and potentially twenty twenty-five that we need to address. So this is a good year to have. So this is a good year to have surplus fund balance and use it for that purpose. Overall, the year ended, you know, obviously positively. There were some, some concerns within. There were certain line items that were high and low. We had a lot of extra interest income this year that was unbudgeted. We also, if you recall, took on the last remaining dollars that we had lost in that fraud case a number of years ago. So that was a nice surprise to get that money back, $100,000. There were some, some cost items that were above, things like vehicle repairs were above. Some areas in personnel due to some attrition and shortages where overtime numbers are higher. But overall, we were able to end the year positively and be able to contribute to some other fund balances. I think operationally, we've, we're kind of back to normal now this year after COVID, a year or two of impact of that. I think we're fully back into a normal operational year. I think Park and Rec did well with programming, you know, other areas, licensing, building, permitting, things like that have, have gone well. So I don't foresee any issues going into 2024, but as for 2023, this is the, the, kind of the unaudited finals. And as you can see on there, I noted in the previous agenda item, on the first page, I added a new section for fund balance that you can see where that goes to, and you can see that we're projecting our fund balance to be about 27% to end the year.
Okay. Any questions of the financial statements unaudited for Greg? Otherwise, this was just information only. Okay, we'll move on. 10J, consider discuss approve on the formulation of an Ashwabon Arts Advisory Council. Rex?
Okay. Couple of years ago, the village board had several breakout sessions over at the community center to formulate our strategic plan. One of the strategic plan objectives was to continue to increase the quality of life for our village residents. Under increasing quality of life, one of the sub-breakout items was to create like an arts advisory council or an arts council to kind of guide the village on potentially placing physical, physical pieces of public art out in our community. Now, whether that be painting walls, whether that be lighting, whether that be banners, whether that be statues, painting traffic boxes on some of the main corners, so they're not just green and gray boxes. There was all kinds of things that, you know, were bantered about. But that's kind of how we're, we're looking at what the purpose of this council would be, or this advisory committee. It would be under the auspices of the Park and Rec Board, who would make recommendations from the art, from the advisory committee, then to village board. And ultimately, anything that would be projected would go to the village board. So what I, so it's been sitting around, basically, for two years. We haven't really done anything with it. We've had lots of other projects happening, but we'd like to try and at least kickstart it and see where it goes. It, it probably won't be a, a simple, quick process. This is, you know, people have a lot of different ideas of art. This is a committee that has no history in Ashwabanon. So I think there's a lot of things that will need to be worked out, but I'm trying to find a, a good starting spot that the village board is comfortable with to get it going. So how this has progressed is, is we've looked at a number of art councils, advisory councils, and a number of other cities. If you just Google art advisory committees for a municipality, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them, and many of them have their, their, their bylaws and their processes. I mean, you can pick and choose, there's so many out there, I, I can't even begin to tell you at the, at this point. But I'm going to try and break it down. There's really two ways to do it. One of them is to try and keep them at arm's length, where some communities do, where it's really the art committee that makes the decisions of what goes in, like the actual thing, the, the structures or the painting or whatever it is is decided upon by the committee. The city council or village board of that municipality basically just says in general what, what they're looking for. But the final say goes to the art committee. The other way to do it is have it more under the municipality's wing, per se, where, where the art committee solicits a call for art, for whatever they're looking for. They look at the submissions, they make a recommendation to the governing body, and that governing body then decide, they, they are the deciding factor of whether or not they would like to see that piece of art out in the community. So there's a couple of different ways to do it. You're either, you either have a lot of control, or you leave it up to the art committee to do it. I just am starting on this, as I said before, so, but I'm just working in the village before, and maybe I'm wrong. I'm going to guess that as a whole, our village board might feel a little more comfortable having that control of what goes out into our community, because we are such a destination spot, you know, for, for, with the Packers and, and with our entertainment district and, and the shopping district. So before I start meeting with people, before we start looking for potential community members to join the committee or be a member of the committee, before we do any of that, I'm just kind of looking for some direction in whether or not the village board feels comfortable with that method of what I just explained. Basically, the committee would meet, what projects do we want to try and tackle next year? So this committee's, committee's already been formed, right? What do we want to do next year? So they pick one or two projects, they do a call for art, so they would have a form that they would send out through, there's Wisconsin Art Network, basically, that goes to all the different artists. Artists would then submit their thoughts, a potential design, a sketch, an idea of what they would like to do. The committee would then vet any of those ideas that came through and make a recommendation to the village board on what they think would be best suited for that particular project. So with that being said, I'm going to open it up for thoughts, comments, and, you know, good or bad, or, or a change of direction on, on how the village board, are you comfortable with us starting out this way, or would you like to see it in a totally different direction?
Okay. Does anybody have any comments?
I guess for me, I would, I guess for me, I would definitely like to have more control over it in the beginning, and also try to utilize more local artists versus somebody from a distance away. That would be my only comment.
This was discussed at Park Committee, and there were a lot of different suggestions on how to form it. You know, you can have it a 501(c)(3), so it's totally separate. You can have it be a village. It seemed like there was more reception for having it a village committee than a 501(c)(3) in a separate organization. There were lots of different ideas and things that went back and forth. One of the things I mentioned to Rex earlier was, we have a performing arts center here, and we have a director of it, Kate, who does a great job with the performing arts type thing. Is there a connection with that and to have her be involved in the formation of this committee, or maybe even being a liaison to this committee? I mean, I know it's performing arts versus the type of art that Rex has mentioned, but just to pick her brain and see what her thoughts are on maybe establishing this. She also, I believe, has a board that she works with, with the PAC, and I don't know what their role is, but maybe they could serve in this capacity as well, and then we don't have to form a totally new board. So that's something I would suggest, at least we look into and maybe talk to Kate about a little bit and see, you know, what her thoughts would be on that. You know, Rex is really busy at the Parks Department, and, you know, to take on another committee, you know, maybe see if there's somebody else that doesn't have their plate so full already that could help out with this and get it going. I mean, it's a learning curve. It's something totally new for Rex to do. I mean, there's a lot of research and a lot of information out there that he can look at, and he'll learn from all of that, and he's capable of doing it. But I just think looking into it a little further might be a good idea to see how we want to format it and if Kate can provide any insight.
Okay. I like the idea of the board having a final decision, too. And I like the idea of local artists, but I would not be opposed to a super famous, you know, nation, nation, nationally recognized artist, if they want to place a piece here, I would say, heck yeah, bring it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And one of the other things that came up at Park Committee was that a fair amount of the art may end up in public land, and a lot of that is, you know, part of the responsibility of the Park Committee. And maybe having a person from the Park Board sit on this advisory committee to have that connection as well, if there was someone. And there seemed to be a bit of interest from the Park Board that someone might be willing to serve in that capacity and be that liaison between the two.
And, correct, Tracy. No, we had, we had a good discussion this afternoon. So one of the things that we tentatively have planned is to kind of do a call for committee members, which goes out, which would go out potentially in our spring/summer park and recreation brochure, which goes to print next week or gets delivered next week. I, I like the idea of touching base with Kate. I mean, maybe Kate or one of her staff would be interested in serving on the committee. I know we've already talked to, or I've, I've reached out to at least one person, because this is, this is an idea that actually was hatched before the strategic plan. This, this was talked about when we were building our community facility projects back in 2014, 2015 internally a little bit, when we're looking for arts to actually put in some of our community facility projects. It was talked about, hey, we should maybe have one of these committees, and they could help us out with this stuff. So I actually had one or two contacts sitting in my file, basically, for about eight or nine years, and, and one of them has already stated that they would be interested in, in being on the committee. So if we, if we do a committee, you know what I mean? Or whether we kind of meld it with, with the performing arts committee, I don't know what the best way is, but that's, it'll be a good conversation with, with Kate if, if we decide to move forward then with this.
Well, and Kate has a new employee.
I think this is all really good. I think this is all really good, but what I would like to see is, my biggest concern is scope of projects. I, you know, we're all kind of talking about an individual piece of art. Okay, but what about, what about the Christmas decorations? That can be art, that can go out into the community. There's all kinds of different things. There's.
Thousands, Jay. There's literally.
Exactly.
Thousands of different.
So that's what I'm, what I'm, yeah, so what I'm concerned about is, I think we need to come up with a charter for this committee. I think this is all great. I think it all head in the right direction, but I think we need to have a charter to put some guidelines and scope as to what it is we're looking to try to accomplish. And I think it kind of goes back to our statements that we made when we did the strategic plan. I think we need to review that a little bit and see if we can help guide this committee as to what it is, what, you know, that we're trying to accomplish when we put together the strategic plan, and this was a piece of it. I think it's all good, but I think we need some sort of guidelines to help this committee. And I still do like the control that it's coming back through the boards and things like that.
So at that point, it becomes the chicken or the egg. Who makes those guidelines, whether, whether it be staff or whether it be the committee itself? My thought is, is that, you know, if, if you're good with this, and whatever the committee, however we form the committee, whatever the membership is, the first thing I think we should do is, is, is kind of let them chart the course of, of what, what is considered art and, and what, what do they want to accomplish? Now, obviously, some of that will be feedback from the village board, and, and some of it will be certainly their own, their own personal interests of why they're sitting on the committee, I'm, I'm going to guess. But yeah, this is not going to be a committee that's formed quickly. I, I, I think just forming the guidelines, policies, goals and objectives of the committee, trying to, to rein that in will, will, will take a, a bit of work, certainly doable. But I think, Jay, I don't, I don't disagree. What, what is the goal of it, and it needs to be worked on. But again, who's going to do that? I think if we form the committee, that's one of the things I, in my personal opinion, for, for that ownership to sit on the committee is, is what, what do you guys want to do? They would form some goals, objectives, rein it in, and then, and bring it back to village board. Again, everything goes back to village board, the way this is, would be set up, and to see if the village board then is comfortable, you know, and maybe we do progress reports or something like that to make sure that.
Yeah, I'd be really comfortable with that, Rex. I'd be really comfortable with that, Rex, you know. I agree. I think the committee is probably the right people to figure out what it is, but I think we got to, in forming this, we just got to have, we got to come up with what that is, and they're probably the right, that'd probably be the right group of people to do it.
Okay. Joel?
I think I'll just add one thing to the, to the context of the conversation. One of the, based on what I'm hearing, is I think what we need to do is develop a, a plan or even a policy or procedural process. So the first aspect of it is, is does the board want to be involved in the direct planning of preparing that kind of document, that plan, that process, that procedure, that policy? Or do you want to have a, a different body, this kind of special ad hoc committee, to develop that, which would ultimately go to the village board for final approval? Either way, either it's the village board, it's the park board, or it's this ad hoc committee, if you will, this council, that first creates the plan, the policies, and the procedures. And we want to make it very clear to that group that that's your first task, because what's inevitable is that you, you get a, you know, a group of artists in the groom, and they're going to talk about art. And that's, that's great, but we need to have the plan, the policy, and the procedures in place first. Where are these going to be located? How many locations are we going to have? As much as we want to think that artists are willing to donate their pieces, they don't. There's compensation involved. What does that look like? How does sponsorship work? There's a lot of detail, administrative detail that would need to go into this. I think that's really the first question is, do you want to have an arts council to develop that plan for village board adoption, and then they can kind of run with it? Or would the board like to do that in concert with staff? Of course, obviously, we're going to do the preparatory work for your consideration. So that's really the question at hand. If a committee or council is formed, I would recommend that that be their first task, so that they can kind of formulate what that overall plan will look like. Unfortunately, I missed the park board meeting, so I wasn't able to, to include, but, and maybe Rex did, but we did meet with Mosaic Arts, the organizers for Art Street. We've met with them and had concept, conceptual conversations about what this looks like. So conversations about including Kate Green, Mosaic Arts, and some of these other art groups is certainly within the purview of this council as well, because they, they do this, these types of projects and programs in other communities as well, so they have a lot of insight for us. So I think tonight, your question is, do you want to have kind of that initial control of establishing a plan and policy, or do you want to delegate that to this council so that they can prepare it for your consideration in the future?
We aren't the experts. Let the experts build it.
Yeah, I would agree.
And then bring it to us.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree. I think that as a village board or as a village, obviously, we have to do very, very general guidelines. This is what the committee is. This is what we envision, just really general, and then the committee itself needs to get into the details and the specifics, because they're the experts. They know they're going to be able to put that together and have it be workable, but they need to understand what they're getting into when they get on that committee. So I think the village board has to put something together, just an overreaching type information.
I agree. Okay. I, yeah, I agree with.
I agree as well.
I, I think that they have to have some basic guidelines, but when it comes to, you know, some of the detail, they, they need, they are the experts in the art, so. Okay. Any other comments on this? Otherwise, this is information only.
I think it's a good idea.
I, I don't have any problem on where you're going with this as far as the arts of the village. What I do have a question about, is this advisory? What I do have a question about, is this advisory board or is it a committee board?
Advisory.
I don't mind having an advisory board to consult with the park department, but I don't believe we need another committee within the village. We've got plenty of committee meetings at the moment, and I don't know if I'm going to be in favor of another committee.
It would, I, I think it's been discussed, I was at that park board meeting, that it would be an advisory board. It's, it's not a committee, so.
All right. I don't have a problem on an advisory board. I heard the word committee quite a bit, but I, I, I think the idea is good. I'm not against that by any means.
Okay. Okay, we got a little bit of direction there.
Thank, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. 10 K, consider discuss act on Village of Ashwabnan, resolution number R2-2-24, resolution disallowing claim of Wisconsin Realtors Association. Patrick.
Thank you. Back in November, the WRA, Wisconsin Realtors Association filed a claim against the village stating that there are certain provisions in our short-term rental ordinance that were unlawful, arbitrary, unreasonable, et cetera. The, the primary claim that the WRA, WRA is arguing is that the property manager requirements in our short-term rental ordinance is unlawful. Village staff has reviewed the claim, reviewed our ordinance, we discussed it certainly with our league insurance representatives, and we disagree with the law firm representing the WRA's claim that the, that that provision is unlawful. There are a couple of other more specifics we can get into detail. Would probably spare the trustees right now and, and prefer not to answer some of those. If there are specific questions as to what we're possibly thinking and regarding for any kind of future litigation, I'd be happy to address those maybe one-on-one with the trustee or any staff member for that matter. But as far as this claim is concerned, once the municipality gets the claim, we have to formally disallow the claim. And then the claimant, the WRA, can decide what to do going forward, whether that being filing a lawsuit in circuit courts or whatever other option that they want to, want to go by. So by, by law, the village does have to either allow or disallow the claim. There is a resolution drafted, R2-2-24 requesting, the staff is requesting that that resolution be adopted, disallowing the claim filed by the Wisconsin Realtors Association.
Patrick, I so moved.
Thanks, Jay.
We've been, we've been over this. Yeah, we've been over this. You've, you've explained it to us a couple of times and yeah, we, we don't want to do this right now. If they're, they want to come back after us, fine. And then we'll deal with it.
Come on, get us.
Okay, so we have a-
I agree.
Do we have a second? A second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to disallow the, or to adopt resolution number R2-2-24, disallowing the claim of the Wisconsin Realtors Association. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Number 11, items for next agenda, I'm sure that we have them. Yes, Joel?
Just one quick reminder that we will be having a special board meeting next week, Tuesday.
Yep.
I believe at 4:30.
4:30.
So I think some of you that are virtual are going to be available to be here in person to take up matters in the full session that would have normally been scheduled for this evening.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Thanks, guys. Enjoy the weather down in Florida, sunny Florida.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.